Good evening. Welcome to our Board of Education Workshop Session. Today is Tuesday, November 9th, and we will be live streaming this. It is available on our district's YouTube channel, and a direct link will be posted on the district's website. I'll officially call this meeting to order, and if you would all stand please for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Dr. Young.
Here.
Dr. Ward.
Here.
Mr. Stone.
Here.
Ms. Reinhardt.
Here.
Mrs. Gleason-Miller.
Here.
Mr. Harrell.
Here.
Ms. Kow.
Here. It is my pleasure this evening to do a quick introduction of our Pro Start group. This group this evening is from North Kansas City, and they provide a tasty mixed greens, strawberry, spinach, Caesar salad, and biscuits for us. I'd like to introduce Shannon Gililand and Alitha Cassidy, their instructor, and the students will be saying a few words.
So these are our North Town Pro Start fellows, our aspiring chefs, and even though we're running a little behind tonight, I think you would all agree, it was totally worth the wait because these young guys made some awesome stuff. And Mrs. Cassidy is our newest member of our North Kansas City family as a Pro Start and FACS teacher. So I'm going to let you talk about your program.
Hello. Thank you, guys, for inviting us. These guys have been working since after school, trying to get the food ready for you guys, and we've been working hard. I didn't even get a chance to change back into my dress shoes, so pardon my, pardon my feet. But these guys are aspiring chefs. They're leaders in the classroom. They're very engaged, and they just really get into what they're doing. So I just enjoy seeing them work. All of these guys are aspiring chefs, and they have even talked about competing for FCCLA in some of the food competitions, the Color New York competitions, and so we look forward to that in the future.
All right, you guys want to tell them what you guys made?
Yeah. So we made a variety of salads.
What's your name?
Oh, I'm John.
I'm Garrett Cooper.
I'm Isaiah Dewberry.
And we're the only three that worked tonight, so we were a little understaffed. That's why it took a little while. But yeah, we made a variety of salads and dressings, toppings, all for y'all, and all from scratch, other than the feta cheese and the blue cheese and like the fruit, that's it. We all, we made that all. They made most of the salads, and I made some of the dressings, the bacon bits. So it was just a group effort, and he made the koutons that I heard y'all like.
And the pecans.
And the pecans. So, but it's all of our group, it's all a group effort every day when we cook, and we really enjoy it. We aspire to like open food trucks or even restaurants in the future. We really enjoy our class. Thank you guys for having us. Thank you.
Thank you. We really appreciate you. It was absolutely delicious. You do have a little evaluation to provide for them. That's in addition to the menu that they provide to us. The evaluation will go to Peggy, and we will make sure that they get it. So, thank you. Now, on with the meeting. There, I would look for a motion for approval of the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Been moved.
If.
Seconded by Mr. Harrell. Any discussion? All those in favor of approval of the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign, and the agenda is approved. We have very little business this evening, but one is the statement of intent to retain construction management at risk, and Mr. Harrell will be presenting that statement.
I'd be glad to. Just going to read the following statement, and it's also posted within our board agenda. But the North Kansas City Schools Board of Education intends to hire a construction manager utilizing a construction manager at risk, the acronym being C M A R, delivery method for work which may arise from an upcoming bond, should be approved by voters. The C M A R selection process will occur as follows. The district will publish a request for qualifications, known as an RFQ, in local newspapers and on the district's website. The district will evaluate and rank each of the qualifications submitted. Based solely on qualifications, the district will select five or fewer C M A Rs to submit additional information, including the proposed fee and price for filling the general conditions. The district will publicly open the fee submissions, and a C M A R qualifications will account for 60% of the valuation, and cost will account for 40% of the evaluation. The Board of Education will interview at least two of the top qualified proposals as part of the final selection. The board will select the C M A R that submits the proposal, offering the best value for the district based upon the published selection criteria and on its ranking evaluation. Thank you.
This is not going to require motion or approval of the board, but will serve as a notification to, to the public of our process, and I just, several of you on the board are newer to the construction manager at risk. I think we did that before several of you were on. I wondered if Dr. Evans or Dr. Clemens might talk to that just a little bit.
Yes, certainly. The process in which our school district uses is that we will go through, we'll post and accept folks that would like to do work for the school district, and we'll narrow that, that group down to Jeff Vandel and Chad, or Dr. Evans and his team will, will narrow that group down to the final two, and those final two will come interview in front of the board, and then we'll have rubrics to score. But generally, what the, what this position does is they manage all of our building construction projects, ensuring that they're, they're under budget and on time, and they, they hire all of the contractors that work for the school district during our bond issue.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board on this, or? Okay. So you will be involved in more of the process as time goes on then. Thank you. Thank you, Paul. Our next item of business, our workshop topics, and we have a COVID update. Dr. Hilvitz.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to address the board tonight. I'm going to begin with reviewing case rates. So on September 28th, I reported our seven-day case rate was 84. On October 10th, our seven-day case rate had dropped to 46. On October 26th, our seven-day case rate sat at 29, and our current seven-day case rate is at 25. As you can see, our case trend has flattened out. Our, according to the Mid-America Regional Council Data Hub, the community case rate trend is beginning to catch up with us. They were a little behind. We were at a, a little bit steeper curve than they were. Clay County has reported case rates are down 35% in the county as compared to the seven previous day period. As you know, Kansas City extended their mask mandate at private and public schools through December 2nd, and I would also like you to know that we're in the process right now of shifting some of the work of the contact tracing that our SCRSs have been doing. We're going to move that back to the county and the city health departments so that the SCRSs will be able to spend more time focusing on student mental health issues. At this time, I'm open to any questions from you, Madam President of the Board.
Any questions from the board?
If I could just follow up on that contact tracing with our, our social workers. If you remember, when we first opened school, one of the conditions was that we would help the county contact trace, and as numbers have come down to a point now, our social workers have a full-time job within just what they do within our schools, and this contact tracing has kept them from doing all that they could be doing, and so we need to get back to, to supporting our kids within the buildings. And I know we will continue to also support Clay County when needed, but we're, we're moving back into the business of, of doing social work.
It'll be good for the kids. Thank you very much for your presentation this evening. Our next item and remainder of the meeting is regarding dual language considerations. We have our student team.
If, if I could just start really quick, and just want to say thank you so much to our presentation team tonight. Of course, everybody knows Kristin. We also have Susan Downing here with us. She is a global languages teacher at Staley High School and seal of biliteracy coordinator, and Wendy Myers, who is our gifted Spanish teacher. And so they have been a part of this committee that has been working diligently now for, I think about the last three years on this work, and so I just can't thank them enough for their, the time, the commitment, and the passion that they bring to, to this work, and really looking forward to, to tonight. So just wanted to, to say thank you.
Thank you. We are excited to be before you tonight to talk about language offerings in North Kansas City schools. Like Dr. Sutton shared, this has been a journey for us of research since the fall of 2018, which seems like a long time ago, and I know that we are excited to, to be here with you tonight to speak to you about three specific options that we would like to share this evening. Again, I do want to thank Ms. Downing and Ms. Myers for their work all through, they, they've been with me since the start of this committee in 2018, and even during COVID times, we would still meet monthly via Teams and to continue our conversations about this work. I don't think you will find two more passionate people about this work, and we're just so fortunate to have them in North Kansas City schools and on our teams. So I thank them for being here tonight. So this evening, we are going to, maybe?
Is it on the side? No? Oh, yes, it is. There we go.
Or not.
Or not. There we go. Thank you.
This evening, we are going to be working in the student, the student quadrant of our balance scorecard. So we are going to take a look at that third item, which speaks to creating language offerings for pre-K to 5 students with the intent to develop a timeline for implementation. So the work that we're doing behind this, we really want to come from the lens of student outcomes first. So we are going to present programs to you this evening, three different programs, and we are going to talk to you about expected outcomes for each of those programs. We're going to talk about strengths and obstacles that each of those programs face for us, and then we're going to share with you an estimated budget for each of those three options. Our ultimate goal is to graduate biliterate students that are ready to go out into our global society and compete with any, anyone out there. And to do that, we believe that having a language offering beginning in pre-K is one step to get us towards this ultimate goal. I'm next going to turn it over to Mrs. Downing, and she is going to speak to us about specific outcomes and best practices for instruction of foreign language.
Thank you. So let's begin with the end in mind. What level of language do we want to send our graduates out into the world with? Currently, we offer a 9 through 12 program where our students can be expected to achieve an intermediate low to an intermediate mid range of language proficiency. This allows our high achievers to earn the Seal of Biliteracy, a program that awards 12 to 14 hours of college credit. If a student completed a 3rd through 12th grade program, they would land in the intermediate high to advanced low range. And if our students graduated from a K through 12 program, they would go out into the world already at an advanced low level of language proficiency. But what do these ranges mean? The American Council on the Teaching of Foreign Languages measures language ability through levels of proficiency. Those are divided into novice, intermediate, advanced, and superior. Those are further divided into low, mid, and high. If we take a look at the novice low, you will see the type of language that one might expect from a 1 to 2-year-old child: single words and short phrases. If we take a look at novice high, we will see where our students who take two years of high school often land. Novice high, I like to refer to that as a functional tourist. Our students who take four years of high school foreign language often arrive at an intermediate low level to intermediate mid, and those students are conversational. If you take a look at the intermediate high level of language, those students would be considered well-spoken should they travel or work with people who speak that language. Advanced speakers are not on this range, usually because we don't have them from our language programs, but advanced speakers can function in the workforce and in professional As we take a look at the best practices in language instruction, it is very important to take a moment to note the difference between the traditional methods that many of us experienced growing up and what is now being used as today's best practices. We might have experienced, experienced memorizing lists of words, verb conjugations, worksheets. It was not personalized, it was driven by the textbook, and this resulted in limited-to-know speaking ability. The best practices in today's instruction are holistic and engaged. They are relevant to students' experiences. For example, my students are my textbook. It is very conversational, it is story-driven, we move around a lot, there is continual interaction, and this results in conversational speaking ability. As we take a moment to look at the following clip, you will notice that the teacher is engaging the students in the language versus doing worksheets about the language. Okay, all right. So what are the hallmarks of a successful language program? High student interest and measurable achievement. It is staffed by fully qualified teachers. It has a well-planned curriculum designed to meet program goals. There are sufficient resources to carry out the program, and it has the support of the community and the administration. Why Spanish? If you look at the chart, you will see that Spanish falls in the category of a Level 1 difficulty versus something like Mandarin Chinese, which falls in the Level 4 difficulty. Additionally, Spanish has the greatest availability of, of resources in this area. Our students would have access to learn alongside native speakers. It is the second most spoken language in the country, and it is the most in demand with employers. And if we look at our own North Kansas City Schools data, Spanish is, Spanish is spoken in the homes of 33.5% of our students.
All right. Thank you. Now, I'm going to speak to the possibilities of different programs. There are three main programs which Spanish or another foreign language are delivered in the elementary school. So here are the first two. The first one is the Flex program. It's the Foreign Language Elementary Experience. Now, this one is taught with just one foreign language, but only 30 minutes a week, and we find this in our Sage program currently. Although the instruction is in the target language, that limited exposure really limits how much the students are able to learn and retain. So the students actually get more of an exposure to the language than actual true learning and retention. So at the end, their fluency is at that early level that we saw earlier, where students are able to say single words, memorized phrases, and maybe a few simple sentences, but nothing more complex than that. So by the end of 5th grade, they have attained that novice low level, that very beginning level, and it does not affect what would proceed in the middle schools currently and then in the high schools. Now, the second option is the Flex program, Foreign Language in the Elementary School. This one, the foreign language, is taught for a minimum of 90 minutes a week, and this is presented so that the students are able to speak in that language, and it is a separate subject in itself. So it, again, uses those conversational techniques, the storytelling techniques, the interpersonal connections with the, with the students. And by the end of 5th grade, they would attain up to that novice high level, which is just shy of what the high schoolers are attaining as they finish their second year of, of Spanish or another foreign language. So this would definitely have some impacts in our curriculum as students progress forward into middle and high school. Now, our third option is our Dual Language Program. This is an immersion program where students spend their entire day using the foreign language. So it's dual immersion because half of your day would be spent in the foreign language, and half of your day would be spent in English. Both of those support one another in the learning, and content area is used to teach the language. For instance, the students might have math and social studies and Spanish in the morning, and in the afternoon, they might have English Language Arts and Science, followed by a supportive reteach or connection with the math in English to make sure that all areas have been connected with and learned by the students. So in this way, that the students are living and working in that language. Now, to set up a dual language program, we have found that you often have a micro school within the school. So there are two companion classrooms set up, starting in kindergarten, and these students are kept in these class, same classrooms all the way up as they progress through. So having two classrooms allows for one teacher to be the Spanish language teacher, teaching those content levels, and the other teacher is an English language teacher, teaching the other, and they support each other and work as a team. And as those students move up through the, the grades, then they have a first grade together and a second. So it's a micro school within the school. There are many different ways to split the instruction time. I've just given you one example. So as we, as I've mentioned before, our K to 5 Flex program will result in a, an exposure that students will learn the sounds of the language in a few phrases, but nothing that really impacts learning later on. If we go to a K through 5 Plus, then we get to that novice high level, the same as that second year in high school, and then our K through 5 Dual Language, as they finish 5th grade, they are already at an intermediate mid, a very conversational level, and that is going to significantly impact what students can go, use going forward with their language. Now, with the Flex model, the strengths are those opportunities to be exposed to the language, to have a perspective, a worldview perspective, what other cultures experience, and what it is to learn another language. Now, the reason we do this in the Sage program is because it is a challenge, and especially for our gifted learners who aren't often challenged, things come very easily. Foreign language can be a bit of a, I'll call it a bit of a struggle, but it's a friendly struggle because we work together, and they learn that if they persist over time, that it's okay to not be perfect, and it's okay to progress and put some effort into that. So we're addressing their perfectionism, how to deal with frustration, persistence over time, and understanding how, how we progress. We're wanting those skills to transfer into other content area as our gifted students progress. So as they get to advanced chemistry, they know that it just takes a little bit of extra effort that they will succeed there as well. Now, the, the obstacles to having a Flex model in the class is finding 30 minutes in our busy elementary schedules, staffing that, and we will speak to that in just a moment, the amount of staffing we would need of certified Spanish teachers, and it is exposure experience versus language fluency, and then we will, again, look at the cost of what this would be. So, would you like to take that?
So I'm going to share with you some estimated budget pieces for the Flex model. Again, this is a 30-minute-a-week model, and we are, we are estimating that our startup cost would be just over $1 million. We believe that we would start with pre-K through 2nd grade, so we would put it into those grade levels to begin with, and we're estimating that we would need about 12 teachers in order to cover that across our district. So 30 minutes a week for all students, pre-K through 2. We would like to see a Global Languages Coordinator that would help coordinate this work, pre-K through 12. Oftentimes, a coordinator in a role like this could also serve as a teacher, so we could get some bang for our buck there, if you will. We would need to have a budget for writing curriculum for pre-K 2, and eventually, we would need money to roll that up to 5th grade curriculum. We would need to purchase some resources and, of course, provide professional development for our teachers. Like I said, we would want, or we would suggest to start a Flex program, pre-K through 2nd grade, and then each subsequent year, we would roll that up to the next grade level. We are estimating that we would need about three teachers for those next three years to roll that into 3rd grade to 4th grade into 5th grade. So once we had that program fully staffed for pre-K 5, we had our curriculum, our resources, and ongoing professional development for our teachers. We're just at, just a We're just at, just a little under $2 million for the FLEX piece. Next, Wendy's going to talk to us again about the FLEX model.
So that FLEX model was our next level up in language offerings. So in this model, we are able to achieve some more fluency with the students. Language is retained, and they have a solid foundation for becoming a bilingual speaker. We would initially want to serve all pre-K through 2, just as with the FLEX model, and then roll that up each subsequent year until we get up through, pre-K through 5. Now, some of the drawbacks for a FLEX model are that we need at least 90 minutes a week out of our elementary schedules in order to deliver the service. And, of course, we would need a little bit more staffing because we have more minutes needing to be taught, and the cost reflects this as well. So if you'd like to?
Absolutely. So speaking to the budget for a FLEX model, the 90 minutes a week. Again, we would want to start a model like this in pre-K through second grade, and we believe to do that, we would need about 20 teachers to be able to cover all of our sections for 90 minutes a week. In doing so, that would take us to about $1.6 million. This would also include the Global Languages Coordinator, curriculum resources, and professional development. Like the FLEX model, we would roll this up in subsequent years, so third grade, then fourth grade, then fifth grade. So after we, after four years, when we have this program, pre-K through 5, in order to fully staff it and have the resources needed, we would be just over $3 million, again, for the 90 minutes a week.
And the third model, with the dual-language program, because the students are taught their content through those two languages, it eliminates the need to find extra time in the schedule because their day is their instruction. This will foster bilingualism and biliteracy in our students, and the overall academic impact is significant. Students who are in dual-language programs have been found to have higher test scores on reading than their non-dual-language program counterparts. The obstacles to overcome are to find certified Spanish teachers who can teach the content along with the language, although it does not add additional teachers to our staffs, per se, because these students are in an elementary classroom that is offering the language. So if you look at it from that perspective, we are keeping staffing the same there. Identifying the space can be something that we'll need to look at because we would ideally like to have a program in the northern tier of schools as well as a program in the southern tier of schools. That would be a total of four classrooms that we would start off with in kindergarten, and their rollout would be shared from that. And that would be an opportunity for schools in the northern tier to all have participation in this, to send students who opt into this to their program and also in the southern tier. So there is equity among schools. This does limit the student participation. Starting off with four kindergarten classrooms at maximum would be about 100 students who would be able to participate in this opportunity, and then we will speak to the cost of this as well.
So when we're looking at the cost of a dual-language program, we do need to look at the teacher and parapiece. And so while we have the students here, the staffing would actually be an additional cost because we would want this to be a choice program. One thing that we would not want to do is put this into an elementary school, and then only the students in that elementary school would be able to access this program. Rather, we would put this into an elementary school, and then we might have six other schools that are able to feed into that school, if you think of our feeder patterns. And so we would be giving maybe four spots to each school to be able to come together. And so additional staff would be necessary to be able to have a dual-language program. So again, like Ms. Meyer shared, we would have four kindergartens to start off with. So we would have two English-speaking teachers, and then we would have two Spanish-certified teachers that would be teaching through this program. We would also have instructional paras in this program, one per team, that would be able to be a third set of hands that's assisting with the students. For a dual-language program, this is an intensive program where we are teaching content through the language. Therefore, we would prefer to have a consultant to help guide us through the planning and implementation phase of this work. Again, eventually, we would want that Global Languages Coordinator to make sure that we had a seamless program, pre-K through 12, kindergarten through 12th grade, with a dual-language program eventually. Obviously, curriculum and resources and professional development money would be included. To get us started, like I said, four teachers, two paras, and some money there for consultant resources, PD, would take us to about $623,000. Fully staffed, we would roll this program. These students would roll up each grade level through fifth grade. So when we were fully staffed kindergarten through fifth grade, we would be at about $2.5 million a year to be able to roll this into two different sites. I do want to point out that the choice programs that we have had, that we do have in North Kansas City schools, we do provide transportation to those programs, and we have not accounted for that in our budget. So I just do, I want to make sure that we know that piece, and also the facility cost. And so I know tonight we'll be talking about facilities and space for a program such as this. If we are adding sections in, we would need to make sure that we have space to continue rolling those two sections, kindergarten through fifth grade, in either an existing building or a building that may be new to us in the future. So if you look at these three options, again, we really like this graphic so that you can take a look at it and see the different programs, along with the cost, the estimated budget for each of these programs, and where that could get us. So for our K-5 FLEX program, again, that's the 30 minutes a week. We are just under $2 million when we have the program fully funded. For the FLEX program, that would be just over $3 million. That would be the 90 minutes a week. And then the dual-language program would be about $2.5 million when we're full in, which, again, will take us to the results of our 6th through 12 students that are taking a foreign language throughout their middle school and high school. Next, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Downey to talk about what if we win, Dr. Clemmons' favorite phrase.
So to implement these ideas may be a challenge, but what if we succeed? Or, in the words of Dr. Clemmons, what if we win? If we win, we will be sending bilingual North Kansas City students out into the world to compete in a global society. If we win, we will be assisting nine out of every 10 employers who rely on employees that speak a language other than English, according to a 2019 study. If we win, we will continue to foster portrait of a graduate competencies such as communication, adaptability, a learner's mindset, and the empathy that comes with learning another language and another culture. If we win, we will address the North Kansas City Schools Strategic Plan Number Three, Action Plan Number Three, where we design a curriculum and instructional practices to transform awareness, honor inclusion, and prepare all district students to fully excel and positively contribute to our increasingly global society.
As a team that has been studying this work, there's a lot of ifs in this work, and a lot of that has to do with budget, a lot of that has to do with staffing, and then a lot of it has to do with community support. So in the fall of 2019, we did do a community survey, asking about the interest in a language offering or a dual-language program in North Kansas City schools. It was a Likert scale of 1 to 10, how interested are you, and our average response there was a 4.6 on that particular survey. And so one thing that we know that we need to do is to go to our community also and ask for the level of interest, which could drive one of these programs that we're speaking of tonight. We do, of course, need to work with our operations department, our finance department. We've got to make sure that we have space for whatever program it is that we decide to go with. Earlier, Susan talked about the hallmarks of a program, and we want to make sure that we have all of those pieces in place so that we can have a successful program, which includes certified teachers, which include the facilities with which to hold the program. Just things for us to be thinking about. We would appreciate hiring a consultant. We have never done this work in North Kansas City schools, and we would love to be able to partner with professionals that do this work and that implement these programs in schools, and so that is something that we definitely would desire. And then, of course, no matter the program we go with, we would need to recruit and hire certificated language teachers. And with each of those models, we are talking about quite a few teachers. So dual-language, really, we would need to start off with just two certified teachers to get that up and running off the ground. With the FLEX model, the 90 minutes-a-week model, we all-in would need about 38 teachers that are certified to be able to implement that program fully. And then with the FLEX model, which is the 30-minute-a-week model, we would be looking all-in at about 21 staff members. Obviously, we're starting lower than that to get started, just pre-K 2, but all-in, we're thinking about 21 staff members that are certified. So all of those, I know, play a factor into the decision that we're making this evening. And so at this time, Dr. Daniels, I'm going to turn it over to you to lead our discussion.
Thank you. I'm going to give you a few moments to process all that you've heard, and the first step will be to do that individually. You have a piece of paper in front of you that says "Language Offerings in North Kansas City Schools." It has a values question at the top. If you'll find that page for me, that would be very helpful. Should be the second in your stack. Okay. Based on all of the information you've just received, I want you to consider your thinking around question one and then question two. Question one is the values question. What's more important? That North Kansas City schools impacts more students at a shallow level or fewer students with greater depth? So again, that values question is something I want you to wrestle with individually. We'll come back together as a group to discuss. I'd also ask you to spend a little bit of time just brainstorming the second piece, Opportunities and Obstacles. What are other competing interests for North Kansas City schools? Ultimately, what I'm trying to get you towards is answering Matt's favorite question, what's most important and then what has to give to make it so. So again, just spend a little time individually, brainstorming answers to the values question and opportunities and obstacles. Then I will pair you up with some other individuals here, and you will share your thinking at that time. Okay? Let's take a few minutes. Okay, to expose some of the thinking that you've done individually so far, I'm going to put you with another person, or in one group's case, they'll have three. I'd ask you to just discuss those first two questions. Peggy's going to be coming around with a piece of chart paper for you so that we can see each other's responses eventually, but you will record those opportunities and obstacles, the competing interests for North Kansas City schools. So again, please have a discussion about both of the questions you've answered thus far. On the chart paper, write out the competing interests that you've deemed for North Kansas City schools. See what level of consensus you can come to amongst your small group, and then we'll come back together to share those. Here are the groups. Dr. Yang, Dr. Young, I'm sorry, with Mrs. Cowk and Mr. Harrell. And then Mrs. Gleason-Miller, would you mind going over to Dr. Ward over there and working with him?
Sure.
Okay. And then Ms. Reinhardt and Mr. Stone. Okay? Any questions about the task ahead? Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Let's come back together in two minutes. Let's come back together in two minutes. Let's come back together as the large groups so that we can understand all that's been discussed. I walked around and heard some great conversation going on. I do have to say, I don't know that you totally followed the directions, the rules. Imagine that, taking it the direction you wanted. But I'd love to hear all of the thinking that occurred in your small groups. Let's share that out as the small groups and then we'll see if there's any level of consensus. What we need to get to is that last question because what I heard a lot of was I need to know this. I have this question. I need more information here. So I'll start making a list of those as you present. But Dr. Young, I believe they nominated you to share the thinking from your group.
Okay, so I'm a product of foreign language that learner for third grade to 10th grade. Mandarin, three hours a week. So I was asked to present in Mandarin. I hope there are people who can check me on this. Okay, so I'll just do the first one. The first question is how many students will be in the FLESS program when it's fully implemented? And how many students will be in the FLEX program when it's fully implemented? Given we know the cost of it startup and fully implemented, but we would like to know what the breakdown is per student. So the next one is we were leaning towards shallow, which allows for greater exposure of more students for the first question. Because it speaks to the scorecard of language offerings for pre-K through five. For as many students as possible in our school district. It also speaks to that last part with the portrait of a graduate, which is to be able to have cultural exposure and diversity as well as empathy. So given that they can learn a different language, they will be able to have the opportunity to step in somebody else's shoes. Okay, there's the equity component of having more access to the language offering for more students. Also the holistic learning that was spoken about. I definitely did not have that, which I think would have been really amazing to be able to have that. And we were wondering with regards to time and space in place of where it would be in the curriculum. And in connection to the scorecard, could it be offered as after-school program? So we offer the language without having to replace something else and allow a choice for students and parents to be able to access a language offering. What do we do to fit language into the day? That's the main question that we have in addition to how many students would be in each program when it's fully implemented. There was a large discussion, majority of where would the priority be? Given the current performance of all the different goals that we have, the time and the hiring of certified staff. Of course, that was already mentioned, but kind of we're talking about feasibility of these different programs. Also the facilities, the space. The question about serving the community, so it was 4.6 out of 10 was the rating, is that correct? Okay, so that doesn't sound very high, but how many respondents were there?
1,000.
1,000 out of 22,000 potential respondents, okay. And then quality implementation was what we were concerned about and as well as what the competition is in terms of goods and priorities. And then also that community interest part where if 1,000 out of 22,000 respondents to the surveys, that a good, you know, percentage or generalizability of what we would like in the district. In addition, I guess, anything else from our teammates? I think there was that statistic, Mr. Harrell, about the percentage of the cost.
Yes, in many aspects, all of them had different costs. We are just talking in generalities, anywhere from a million to $3 million. While that certainly is a very large number, but realistically, it's 1% to 2% of our total overall budget for staffing. So in many aspects, the whole program could be implemented as is presented tonight with maybe less than a 2% impact to our overall staffing budget.
I think we did, again, just to emphasize the competing priorities of implementing pathways and then backtracking back down through to the elementary right now for some of those portrait of a graduate qualities and implementing that into curricula. The other, of course, is our investment in pre-K and just getting that going and all of the time and effort going into that. So we were just concerned, we've got a lot on our plate on our scorecard right now, so.
And I was curious to other issues that we might go over. One is that there are other foreign language schools that are available on weekends for students. And I don't know how much of the research has gone into them. Because I know there are three Mandarin schools in Missouri that meet on weekends, also about two and a half hours a week, year round. Oh, they are off during the summers. Also, the global languages coordinator, I was curious how many languages, is it plural? So is it just Spanish and English? Is it more than that? So I was curious about the Spanish languages coordinator, what their role in terms of what different languages might be offered. And how many students were there that you were saying were fully implemented for each of the programs?
I do not have that number right here, but we can get that number to you. So FLESS and FLEX would be all of, eventually, all of our pre-K five students.
Okay.
So that's probably around 7,500, 8,000 was what I was thinking.
Okay, okay. I have a spreadsheet that I'm typing.
Yes, yes.
Calculating that, so we did an estimate of 9,000. So that's, so 8,000 now, around 8,000. So that would cost about $243 per student for the FLESS plan. And then the FLEX program would be $379 per student. What about the fully implemented immersion program? How many students would that, would it be the same 100?
It would honestly depend on interest. And so we were going, we were thinking of starting with four classrooms, 100 students in kindergarten. But if interest were more than that, then that's something that we could consider, of course.
Okay, so if it's the same 100 students all the way through, through fifth grade, it'd be $25,000 per student.
But if you take K through fifth grade, that's 600 students then.
Okay, 600 students. So $4,167 per student compared to the most expensive one we're seeing for $3 million is $379 per student. So I think in terms of the cost breakdown, it is, it becomes more expensive with the immersion program.
Okay, thank you, first group, for sharing your thinking. What I have down so far is you were leaning more towards shallow model, but greater exposure for all. Speaking to development of empathy and other portrait of a graduate competencies, creating greater equity and access. And then I listed some questions, some that we got into right here. But I'll make sure that all of those make the list as we brainstorm what's needed beyond this. Mrs. Gleason-Miller, let's hear from you and Dr. Ward.
Okay, Dr. Ward, you're on board here? So I didn't understand what the paper was for and the markers were for us. We don't have a presentation, per se. But we focused a lot on the actual logistics of it. We also focused on what our specific goal is with regard to how it's worded in the scorecard with the intent to develop a timeline for implementation. And so one of the biggest questions that we asked was, you know, are we spending money to fulfill a board need or a patron need? I think that, you know, if you look at the low percentage of the survey, you know, it's a realistic question to ask. So given that, we thought that the immersion program is a good option because those that are interested are able to participate and feel like that's probably a better way to spend that money. And then it gets down to the logistics as far as, you know, are we even able to do this budget-wise? Are we able to prioritize this? Do we even know what our obstacles are that we're facing right now? There's just a whole lot of unknowns, a whole lot of questions that I don't even know, that I think that maybe we can't address right now just in terms of, you know, the fallout from the last year and what that looks like. And just kind of the unknowns that we have that we're facing. Staffing, obviously a huge issue. Transportation being, you know, since we had talked mainly about the full immersion, you know, the transportation issue is a real issue. So there's just a whole lot of questions that need to be answered that I don't, maybe even questions that we don't know are questions right now because there's just so much, so much to consider right now in where we're at as a district. That being said, and getting to the timeline portion of the goal, if we were to move forward with this, we thought that rolling this out, August of 2024 would be the earliest that we would be able to implement. And then beginning that timeline in terms of the actual strategic planning and the tactical planning would begin August of 2023. And, you know, lots of assumptions there in terms of would we be back up to par in terms of staffing? You know, would some of these questions that we have be answered by that time? So lots of questions. But like I said, getting down to the nitty-gritty a little bit more in terms of the timeline. And that would be the very soonest that we discuss that this would even be attainable at all. Dr. Ward, do you have anything that you want to add?
Good summary. Thank you.
Nope. Whoa.
I heard, I heard some of the competing interests in the questions that you raised. Did you have any other specific competing interests that you'd like me to make note of?
The net zero, the early education.
Oh, yeah, right, just, you know, potentially early education would be one of the ways in which we would have to scale back.
Net zero.
Oh, the net, yeah, yeah.
Thank you. All right, our last group.
Okay, the various question that we were asked was this, in case the folks haven't heard it out there. What's more important, that North Kansas City schools impact more students in a shallow level or fewer students with greater depth? I learned something from my colleague, Ms. Reinhardt, today, tonight, that there is a law, a rule in the debate world that called the law permutation. And so her question was, why can't we do both? So some combination of shallow exposure to a large group and more in-depth to the smaller group. My thought, I probably, I've always leaned toward, we do it for everybody, as most of y'all know. But it occurred to me in conversations I've had in public with other people, and I talk about teaching two languages. I get a lot of, well, we want to do that for, kind of stuff. And so there'll be some resistance, in my mind, on part of the public. So my thought was provide greater depth for all who want the program. So in my mind, the long-term goal is all the kids who want it, or parents who want their kids to have it. Eventually, we do that and work our way toward it. So that was our thoughts on the barriers question. The opportunity and obstacles question was, what are other competing interests from Rock North Kansas City schools? Generically, we were together, and it's a matter of core versus extracurricular. You're looking at it from a business-based thing. There used to be a thing called zero-based budgeting, which means whatever the high priority is, you get that done or covered very well before you spend any money anywhere else. So in this case, it would be the classroom versus whatever else is going on in the district. A lot of school districts say they start with the core and they do that. I don't think very many practice it, so. Ms. Reinhardt, oh, pardon me, let me back up. I apologize, Jane. The, we had a conversation with the presenters about immersion versus dual language. I'll let her speak to that.
Yeah, I think this is a clarification that needs to be out there because apparently, I was under the impression, we were talking about a full immersion program, but apparently it's more dual-language program, and they're not synonymous. So that's why you were talking about an extra teachers in the afternoon and things of that sort. The programs that I'm familiar with were full immersion programs, both in this country and in other countries. So I think we need to make that perfectly clear, that they're not the same. And if you were confused about it, I mean, I was too. I thought we were talking about a full immersion program, and apparently, it's dual-language. So that's, that's out there. I guess in terms of resources, like Paul is pointing out, in terms of staffing situations, it's not as impactful as one might think, based on what you said earlier about the 1% to 2%.
We were talking about total percentages of budgets, and when, there was a figure that was just thrown out of a million dollars, and I said technically, a million dollars is a half of a percent of our total staffing budget, if you put it in context.
Right. I mean, because I agree, it looks like a huge amount of money upfront, but I think we need to put it into perspective in terms of what we're looking at and how much bang for the buck we're getting on these particular programs. So anyway, I think that's basically where we were coming from, so.
And I'll let, in terms of opportunities and obstacles, the philosophical place where we were together is, if this is important enough to be a part of the core, then you do whatever it takes to make it happen, and you look at extra stuff outside the classroom and say, that's where the cuts come if they have to, kind of thing. I'll let Ms. Reinhardt speak to the other three up there specifically.
Well, I think to make this happen, it's just like anything else. You kind of have to reevaluate where you are with other programs and how successful those programs are, and are you getting the kind of results that you think you can get from those programs? And if not, then those priorities can be shifted. And I'm not saying, you know, cut programs, per se, or eliminate people or anything else. There's a tremendous amount of attrition that takes place in the wonderful world of education. So I think resources can be allotted for this. We need to decide if we're going to go forward and to what depth we want to make that happen. And there are still a lot of questions out there, I will grant you.
At this point, that last question comes into play. You've answered some of it for me, but I want to make sure that we get everything that you need to move forward. I've heard recommendations, or leaning towards, I should say, the FLESS or FLEX, the shallower but greater exposure. Then I heard a leaning toward more immersion. And then the last group proposed perhaps a combination of both. What I'm going to do now is go through the questions that I believe were raised and next steps that were implied. And what I need from you is to give me any that we've missed that would help you move forward, okay?
Any questions that we asked?
Uh-huh. But I'm going to start by summarizing what I've already heard. Okay. Some, go ahead, Mr. Harrell. Some of the questions that came up so far, how many students in the FLESS and FLEX model when fully implemented? The cost per student? Could it potentially be offered after school to allow choice and not create a need to find additional time? Feasibility regarding staffing came up in several groups. What level of community interest currently exists? Are there foreign language schools available on weekends? And what would the role of the Global Languages Coordinator be? Beyond that, are we spending money for a Board of Education need or a patron need? Again, staffing was mentioned. Transportation, feasibility and understanding of that impact. And then what the lasting effects of COVID are, do we even know that quite yet? Then the last question that I would believe was implied here was, why can't we do both? What would that look like?
I'd like to ask one more question if I could. I guess my question would be is, going back to the balanced scorecard, specifically on the balanced scorecard, it talked about create language offerings for pre-K to five with intent to develop a timeline for implementation. So because the balanced scorecard had already been approved by the Board of Education, is it, is it our collective understanding that we've already agreed that we are going to create this offering? And now it's a top, now our discussion is about implementation and timeline?
Well, my perspective on that, to like to respond, is that the choice of the implementation belongs with the administration and the people working it. Our job is to, we've approved the principle, and kind of now, in my mind, we're going to approve the fact that we believe that we're going to provide a competitive advantage to students by being bilingual, biliterate, whatever the proper term is. How they get there is their job. Well, I don't want to get down in the weeds on this issue.
How they get there and when they get there?
It's their, it's their baby.
If I could just address, Paul, your question. I think that during my evaluation conference, we didn't set a super intense goal around this because we thought that we would determine if this was going to move forward with this board discussion tonight. I think that's what I remember, to the best of my knowledge.
So that's kind of where I'm at. I mean, in mind, it'd be my, my belief that if we're not going to go forward with it tonight, that this should be removed from the balanced scorecard. But if we are going to go forward with it tonight, then we need to work through a process.
Recollection was that it was still under great discussion, and tonight, we were needing to gather so much more information that it was very difficult at the point that we had the retreat to make a determination if we had the facilities, we had the wherewithal for the other program we were doing, if we had the financial support and the community support to do it. And there still are several really unanswered questions with that, so.
What I think I'm hearing you say then is that we need to define some of the next steps and further information to be able to associate the timeline and accomplish the balanced scorecard goal, or to Mr. Harrell's point, take it off completely. Does that, am I accurately summarizing the thinking?
I see tonight's meeting is informational for us. So are you ready for the other questions that we had yet?
Yes.
You were going to summarize stuff.
What other questions do you have?
If, where's the dividing line north, when you say north-south?
In my mind, in my mind, Ms. Stone, I think we would just try to find a north and south school and then try to balance the enrollment between the two programs.
Those equal number of schools, kind of around some?
Yeah, just get capacity at a north school and a capacity at a south school.
Geographical kind of thing. Okay.
We have about 11, about 11 schools in the northern part, elementary, and about 11, I think, in the, in the southern, so it does divide.
Yeah, I think I asked this question when we were kind of talking about this at one point, like what school would be considered geographically in the center of the southern district and geographically in the northern district.
Other questions that come to mind?
I have one question, and this is, forgive my ignorance. So when we have late start or early dismissal, I understand the teachers are doing collaboration or preparation. So is that an opportunity for the foreign language to be, or the dual-language program to be introduced at that point to students? Or is it possible to use that time that we usually have a delayed start or early dismissal for this program?
It's certainly something that we could consider. It just, it just requires teachers to be able to, to be able to teach it during that, during that time.
As we look at each of these, and as if one suggestion evolves, having served on this facility planning discussion, I've become so acutely aware with the growth in our district, how tight we are going to be becoming with some of our space. And so if we're adding, some of these require adding quite a bit of space. I want to make sure that we are accounting for that, that along with all of our core that we are currently providing in terms of services and, and I'll think we'll be stretched without careful consideration of that.
I have the impact on the facilities plan if programs are added. Dr. Ward?
I guess I would offer one comment is, if I, you know, Matt, correct me on my arithmetic on this, but if we're talking about moving 19 cents into the operating budget, if that's 220,000 a penny, which I think is in range, maybe it's up a little bit now, 220,000 per penny, that would translate to 4.1 million new dollars in our operating budget, and we'd have to cover growth, unmet needs, early childhood and language programs in that 4.1 million. And that's going to be a constraint.
Dr. Ward, I've added those to the competing interest list, certainly. Okay. Other questions that would help move you forward?
I think just in terms of whether or not it should remain on the balanced scorecard, I just want to know how much, this is a wonderful presentation, by the way. I just wanted to know how much time and how long has this planning been going so we understand, you know, how much effort has already been put into it?
Our committee started in the fall of 2018, and so we met monthly for a year. That included a visit to a dual-language program school. Obviously, in the 1920 year, we were meeting, but that came to a halt. And then this year, we've, it's really just been the three of us, and we've been meeting probably every other week for most of the school year to plan.
Thank you. So given that it's been a three-year research type of ongoing meetings, I think so much effort has already been put into it that, you know, it, it's useful information for us to consider.
Other questions that come to mind?
I had a question with our current foreign language studies. Are there, have there been considerations or are there ways or models that you have seen or considered that could actually amplify the outcomes for those students that show higher interest, better, higher grade levels? Do you understand my question?
Through higher grade?
Well, I'm, I'm saying, yeah, through middle school, through high school. So if they get six years or, you know, of study or five years of study, that is there more intensity or more options for students that really want to achieve? They can get AP classes, that's available to us, and we, we have that accessible already. And are we having any results with that?
We do have college-level classes.
Thank you. We do have college-level classes that our students can take, and it does vary a little bit from high school to high school. Quite honestly, what I have noticed is that it really often does come down to, for my students, sheer time spent in the language. I know that I allow my students to double up on classes so they can take four and five at the same time. And I let students, if they want to stay in the language, they can come in and sit in my classes, even if they've already finished all of them, just because the more time that they are in the language, then the greater their language abilities. It is those students who take, who double up on my classes, who do easily earn the seal of bilinguacy. So it really, in my experience, does truly come down to the amount of time that those students get to spend in the language. And of course, we have to consider the fact that, I really do try to use best practices, so my classes are not worksheet-driven. Mine are very conversational, very interactive, and that also makes a difference. So I would say time and engagement are key factors in whether or not a student ends up becoming bilingual. Does that make, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think so. I just wanted to understand if we could move the needle a little bit in terms of that, and many students are, is what I understand you saying.
In my building.
Yes, yes. Okay, thank you.
What I've heard you say as implications for next steps would include a community survey, finalizing budget, operations information specific to facilities and transportation costs, potentially consultant options that might exist too, and then any information that we could get around the recruitment and hiring of certified teachers. I also have a lot of specific questions that were raised that I believe we could put some answers to in this week's Friday update. A few might take a little more research. But I'd love to start there if we could, capture those questions in the Friday update, answers the ones, answer the ones that we have answers to at this time, and then certainly start moving towards those next step. Do you have feedback for me on that, Mr. Stone?
I thought we already did a community survey. Am I mistaken?
2019.
Like, okay, so it's out of date, essentially. Right. Well, it seems to me to kind of summarize, get my understanding, we as a board have committed to doing something along these lines, to provide the competitive edge, have kids coming out of our district bilingual. So the next step to me is administration comes back with a recommendation on which of the options they think is best, what it'll cost, you know, just the plan of where you want to go with it.
And I'd just add, based upon my interpretation of the balanced scorecard, I would support Mr. Stone in his comment there.
Further response? Thank you very much for the discussion tonight and the great presentation. Mrs. Kuk.
Thank you, all, for all of your work, especially on that. You really have invested a lot. Excuse me. You really have invested a lot of time and effort in this, and it's been, it's been of great interest to us, and we just haven't quite figured out how to, how to address it going forward. So I really, really appreciate your commitment and information you have shared. Thank you tonight. That is the last item on our agenda this evening. Can't, there we go. You have just a little attention to your calendar. Thank you all for your time and attention to attend the Missouri School Board Association meeting the last three or four days. It's a big-time commitment for the board, and I really appreciate as well will our patrons for the information that you bring forward and helping you do your jobs as, as school board members. So that's a, that's a plus. At this point, with no other business, I adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, guys.